Ms. Duroff.
I am.
Mrs. Kratz.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Roger Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Present.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
All present.
At this time, Ms. Duroff, I'd like to say a couple of words.
As we have our moment of silence tonight, please remember these families and have their families as the following persons in your prayers. The community has lost a great teacher and coach in Bob Heligas. He coached football, basketball at high school and in junior high level. He also coached junior high softball. Both of his boys and two of his brothers graduated from Boyer County. He was so proud. He was well respected by his college admissions. He will surely be missed. Thank you Coach Heligas for your commitment to the Boyer County School District. We also lost a great community icon with attorney Charles Hatton. He was a pillar in the community up till the time of his death. We also lost Coach Richard Mackey who worked with the youth in the Boyer County area. Great men that helped the youth and the community with countless hours donated to help other youths. Rest in peace.
Thank you, Mrs. Duroff.
At this time, we'd like to welcome Lieutenant Commander Hayman and the NJROTC color guard who will be providing a patriotic start to this evening's meeting. Everyone rise for the national anthem.
Color guard, hold. Left face. Freeze and... Colors.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Colors. Ready, cut. Stage, exit.
There was no previous executive session. So we can move on to discussion. KCBA turf field feasibility study presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Good to be here even though it's a very wet night. For those... There we go. Excuse me. Again, it's good to be here even though it's a rainy night. I see a lot of familiar faces and I see some new faces. My name is Jay Cluff. I'm an architect with KCBA Architects. We've worked in and out of the district on and off for over 20 years. Our last project here was the rebuilding of the stadium. So we're really, really, really familiar with it. With me tonight is Kevin Cunningham and I'll have him introduce himself and give some of his credentials.
Hello, my name is Kevin Cunningham. I work with Miller Sports Construction. We're here tonight to present the turf field project. We...I work with a group out of Westchester, Pennsylvania. We've been in business for 35 years and I'm looking forward to presenting on the project tonight.
So off we go. Our assignment was to specifically look at converting three areas on your campus into... From grass to artificial turf. First one's down in the bottom corner is the stadium. The second one is called Field One. It's just off the driveway that was added during the high school expansion. And finally, there's Field Two behind it. Our goal in this presentation tonight is to give you all the information you need to make an informed decision concerning turf fields. Everything from what a turf field is, the stormwater, you know, the components of it, the stormwater management that's required to go with it, the cost to purchase it, the cost to maintain it. And I don't know what I missed. Kevin will get them, whatever I missed here. We started with one of the most obvious things that has to happen. In a township anywhere in this part of the world, this is an improvement to your site. So we went with the staff of the facilities director and we went and met with Colebrookdale Township and said, "Look, what will it take if the school board decides to do this?" So we're also able to give you tonight the township perspective, the timelines and the approvals that would be required to take the three... Any of the three, all of the three, none of the three. The information is there to take them, to give you, taking them from grass to artificial turf. Of course, the advantage of artificial turf on a night like tonight, if you dared to, you could use it. It would not harm it. Or if you used it tonight after the rain, it wouldn't harm it for tomorrow. You see on there some blue images? Those are existing stormwater management areas. One thing I want to point out, it's going to come up later in the presentation. We're kind of fortunate underneath those fields and moving down the field, kind of from the top right-hand corner down to the bottom left-hand corner, is a buried stormwater system that's actually draining your site now. So when we get into the fields, you will find out later that they do require stormwater management and you have to discharge the water someplace. Fortunately, when we get to that point, we have something that's been there long before we were. I guess that was in the 50s or 60s that they put that in. So with that, we can go to the next slide if I press the right button. So we look at the stadium and what would happen in the stadium? We would be removing all the grass within the track area that is grass. And you see it there, including what would be known as the D-zone off onto the left. We would be replacing that with artificial turf. And we'll hear from Kevin about all the layers. It's like an iceberg, all the different layers that go into that. And I do want to caution you some other things. We are not in this presentation or in our assignment dealing with the track, okay? The track's in pretty good shape anyway, but as it would be, there's no maintenance involved in this. Also, just off the side of this slide, there is a retaining wall in the bottom corner. Nobody can find it, right? It's in the woods. It's between the tennis courts and the end of where it says, well, it says bears on both ends. On the left-hand side of this slide is a retaining wall that someday is going to need some work and it's going to be tough. Right now, it's holding its own, so we're not addressing it. So for our purposes tonight, when we talk about what's going to happen or what you could do in the stadium, we'll be talking about what you see in green. We'll be talking about it being all artificial turf. And we'll talk about it having lines and logos on it. The next field is one of my prime candidates. It's Field One. Now, Field One is located just off the main driveway that was expanded to give us a second way off the campus in the high school renovation. That one would be probably your best use for multipurpose. It's in a good location. It's in a spot where it can be accessed. It's in a spot where we can line it. This shows the maximum, for my taste, a little bit too many lines, but that's okay. This shows all the lines that you can do for all the sports. The idea would be that field would be used for all your competition-type sports, field hockey, soccer, things like that. PE classes during the day. Again, it's artificial turf. It doesn't hurt it. You can use it 10, 12 hours a day if you can get on it. So that would be one of the prime areas that we will be talking about. We were also asked to look at Field Two and that turns out to be kind of a bust. But we kept it in just because the assignment was, "Look at all three." Honestly, this one doesn't do you much good. Because of the topography and because of the way the lines are coming in, I mean, the roads and everything comes in there, the gravel over by the stadium, baseball stadium. It's an undersized field. It's probably not a good candidate for artificial turf. We did go through the exercise of putting all those numbers together for you just to fulfill the assignment that all three... Someday, somebody's going to ask you, "Hey, did you ever think about the other field?" You say, "Yes, we did." As the team, Kevin and myself and others that have been looking at it, it's not a candidate for artificial turf. We really think it's probably one you want to pass on. I wanted to say something about that first one and it's come and it's gone. Well, we'll figure it out. Later on, I'll find out what I wanted to tell you about the stadium field. And we go to the next one. So is this one yours or mine, Kev? I think this one's where you start us. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
That's your button.
Perfect, thank you. So the next few slides will cover the project scope that we are offering and the different price packages that were requested, as well as the turf product that we're going to be presenting for the job. So when Jay was mentioning that, you know, a turf field is like an iceberg, what we're referring to is that the bulk of the cost is going to be in the sub-bass construction. So you have your excavation of Field One. Then we will come in with our stormwater management on top of that. We will have then, you know, our drainage base for our stone system going through each of the options for Field One. Our price option will include our fencing gates and our lighting as well. Jay already mentioned our exclusions. We didn't do any track maintenance for the stadium portion. And also, the stadium retaining wall was held out. So the preliminary cost budgets, now, when we built these out, how we carried everything was to show you what the maximum price for performing these scopes would be. So in each of the price options for the construction, we're looking at the excavation, stormwater management, installation of turf. And then the contingency allows for any of the unforeseen elements of the job. The soft costs are all of the engineering pieces that are being built in. Now, this is just a budget. This is not definitive cost. We haven't done any of the engineering pieces and research elements. This is just a worst-case scenario for each field that we want to build for to present. And then we try to work it down to fulfill the need for each job. So when we were asked initially, it was the stadium field was our first package. Field One was the main focal point. And Field Two, which we are no longer recommending based on our further conversation. But we presented the numbers here because we had initially done so. So it was just a moot point at this time. So one of the packages that was requested, the main focal point would be for showing the stadium in conjunction with Field One. So this total dollar amount, the $6.7 million is if we were to go the maximum for those two sites. So the difference, when this was presented back in October, one of the questions... I have turf samples here, pad samples and infill. If it'd be appropriate to hand them out now, I can do so? You can hand out both of them.
Yeah, we'll go either way.
So that has... The first box will have some of the alternative infills that were requested, presented, as well as the base pad. And the second box, or reverse, that you'll see the turf samples in the second box that's coming around. So the differential in pad height here, in turf pile height, is going to depend... The package that we presented is to include a pad, as well as the pile height will fluctuate depending upon which infill option is selected. So the majority of the fields that we are installing are put in with a sand and ground-up... Ground-up recycled tires. SBR is the shorthand for it. That's in 95% of the fields across the United States. The other alternative that I have in the small jars is called, it's a calcium carbonate product. That's the sand and geocool. That will drop the surface playing temperature by 50 degrees, which that is very appealing, knowing in the middle of the summer how hot some of these synthetic turf fields will get. And we packaged, showing you all the different sports options for that multipurpose field with...that we showed, I'm going to go back a couple of slides, that we showed on this layout. So this is our baseline layout that we're showing for Field One, as well as lighting and fencing is included in our price. Now, if we wanted to cover, the next piece would be just the maintenance on these fields. It's not something that we can just set it. I know we're getting away from the tedious maintenance of a natural grass field, but there are still our maintenance requirements. The one piece that is built in to our budget prices would be the turf groomer that would attach to your piece of Kubota or a four-by-four that you have to tow for your different equipment that would help clean the turf and do your regular grooming. Now, on an annual basis, we are recommending a maintenance package that we would come in and do a deep decompression of the infill. The infill becomes compressed the more that we use that turf field. We want to be able to keep that infill at its highest level so we don't shorten the carpet replacement cycle. So if we implement an annual maintenance program, we have found that we are fully optimizing the investment that districts are making in their new synthetic field. So that's what I'm showing with our deep, annual deep cleaning. The next element we have is G-Max testing. G-Max testing is the testing done for the shock attenuation on a field. That's just to ensure that we're within the safety parameters. I know, you know, in all sports, we're worried about concussions and other, you know, impact injuries. To ensure that we are, our field is up to that standard, that is what this is showing, to be on an annual basis, to ensure the G-Max testing is fulfilled. That's where having a pad put in really separates a field. If we have a pad, we're going to be able to guarantee, or the research and studies will show that we are guaranteeing a G-Max testing that's going to maintain the safety of that field to, you know, optimize and limit our exposure for any injuries that could occur. So the next piece that I referred to was the anticipated lifespan. So the projected cost for another, in 12 years from now, for replacing the field would be $500,000. Now, that's estimated off of today's costs and, you know, some inflationary pieces for 10 years. It's hard for me to pinpoint that, but I feel that that is a very accurate number to give you. Now, this is where Jay would step back in.
And I remember now what I was going to tell you about Field One. When the high school project was approved, Field One was approved for overflow parking. I don't think you've ever used it. I hate to use it on a night like tonight. You'd be mired in the mud. But the code in the, I think it was probably Colebrookdale Township code, says that you can set us on, I think it's like 400 spaces. It's a lot. So we have filed in the court, you know, the official plans that are filed with the high school, with the county, show that that Field One has several hundred cars on it. So when we get into the discussions with the township, and I remember that, and again, we were totally transparent with the township. I don't want to get a big surprise and you guys say, "Yeah, we think we want to do this." And suddenly, the township says, "Hey, we're really got all kinds of issues." Scott and I were in there and we said, "Pour your heart out." And they said, "You got to do something with the parking." So we have two choices with that. We can just relocate it, which is just an engineering exercise where you show another spot to put the same amount of cars. Frankly, I'd probably put them on Field Two. There's a driveway to get there and I think it's going to be that simple. Or you go to the zoning board and say, "I don't need that many cars because we've never parked them there in the history of the high school." Choices to be made later. That's what I wanted to tell you about Field One. Not a big deal, but it's not as clean-cut as it could be. You cannot park on artificial turf. You do not do that. You would ruin it. So what is the process? Where do we start with this thing? The first thing about this is identifying the existing conditions. You need to have soil testing because, again, in the eyes of the county and Environmental Protection Agency and the township, we are increasing the impervious surface. Frankly, I don't think it increases a lot, but almost every township we work in says, "Hey, it's not as impervious as lawn." I almost take issue with that, but that's fine. They get to do the rules. That's what it says. So we need to know... The idea behind this thing, the basins that you see in blue are handling what's on-site now. So they are not going to be adequate to handle anything that's extra-created by the engineering that says these fields don't let as much water in the ground. But we do need soil testing to know what amount of moisture would infiltrate into the ground on your site. It's pretty clay here, but again, it's fine. It is a requirement of the Department of Environmental Protection, even if it doesn't pass, all right? If it's as hard as this tabletop, we must go out, take soil samples, have them analyze and say, "Hey, this is, on a night like tonight, the water is or is not going to go into the ground." The second thing we're going to need will be an accurate site survey because when we did the high school program, as you would imagine, we concentrated in the areas we were working and we weren't working over here, so we don't have much information. It's really important to know about, you know, citing these things. They have to drain correctly, have to be crowned correctly, just like artificial... I mean, just like genuine turf. A field is a field, right? It has to have the same engineering with it. There's an unlikely need, but the township could ask for it or the Department of Environmental Protection could ask for it, for a wetland study. You do have wetlands up in the corner, but I don't see anything out here that looks like it would be that. But they will not take my word for it, nor would they take a general engineers, civil engineers. They're going to say, "I need a wetland specialist." We baked all that into the thinking in the worst-case scenario. I'm not sure that's going to be needed, but that's where you start, okay? Before you do anything, you got to know what you're dealing with. The next thing that happens, there's engineering. And again, the fields have been engineered in terms of the product, you know? Kevin went through all that, all those layers. That's great. But site-adapted to the stormwater, where does it go? Again, we are proposing storing the stormwater under each field, letting it out slowly at the same rate that it's running out of the field now on a night like tonight, into that pipe system that connects all those blue guys that you see there and empties out down by the stadium. And because of that, it does take a fair amount of engineering. There's calculations and it has to be demonstrated and back and forth. The township, I thought, because I've been with you guys a long time and there's been some times when it's been a little rough, candidly, okay? They were all in, honestly. Is Scott here somewhere? I know, yeah, he is. He's hiding. He's going to talk to you later. Scott and I were there and we were pretty happy with the response. First of all, it was candid and open. And secondly, I didn't check, I didn't sense any back push, like, you know? So the approval process, however, is a process and it does take about nine months. And I'll tell you how that happens. They were very gracious. They said, "Look, if you get in front of the planning commission once, let them know what you're doing and talk to them about it. We'll be fine. After that, you can go to our township engineer and work directly with him to get the engineering all worked out and everybody will be happy with it." Perfect. The next thing, the zoning board probably will come into play and I'll tell you why. We're strongly recommending, if you spend the money for an artificial turf field, that you light it so you can use it around, you know, very long periods of time. As you all know, this time of year, you get chased off by darkness at, what, 5 o'clock probably? 4:30-ish? So it would be really helpful, and in the morning, you'll get the teams out practicing, to get that turf lit and use it. And we also recommend strongly that you fence it because you don't want people with the wrong footwear on it, all right? It's an investment. You can extend the life of it by significantly maintaining it, by grooming it, fluffing it, D-maxing, all that, G-maxing, all that kind of good stuff. Or you can shorten the life by putting the wrong stuff. The lighting part is where we're going to, I'm almost certain, be in front of the zoning board. All townships have lighting ordinances. The issue comes down to, the new lighting is fantastic. It's almost a straight line. And again, we can show you examples of stadiums, not yours because yours is a little older, but of the new LED lighting and the cutoff and all that. But you have to, again, go to the zoning board, show them calculations for what the light levels are off and how far the spill. Again, I'm not really worried about the spill off your site. You're in the middle of your site, but you may, on all likelihood, need to go to the zoning board. Frankly, I recommend we just find a new spot for the parking, but we'll have to talk about the lighting. Township engineer, we're talking with him behind the scenes. Now, the critical piece to this is the Department of Environmental Protection. The guys and gals that worry about mud, and I'm sure they're staying up tonight because it's washing out everywhere I drove, they are going to have a process. We have to be far enough along with the township before we submit to them. We can do it concurrent to a lot of these things, but not right at the beginning. And they are a state agency. They take time. And that's the creed. The idea is to shave the nine months off of the Department of Environmental Protection approval. Again, we're tasked with giving you highest cost and worst-case scenarios for timelines. That's what you're looking at. Finally, they were very gracious and said, "Look, we think you ought to spend one trip to the township supervisors after you've got it polished." Normally, like when we went back to high school, we were back and forth to the planning commission and supervisors several times. They're saying, "No, no, no, we're good with this. And I have minutes, I did a meeting, we'll give you that package." I circulated the meetings, the minutes to the township and they said, "That's cool. We're good." They said, "Make one trip to the supervisors and, you know, just say, 'Hey supervisors, here's what we're doing.'" So that chunk of time is where all the engineering costs go. That's most of the soft costs absorbed in that process that you see there and that. And then to build it, talking to Kevin and his guys, it's three to four months. And again, it's that because you're going to dig out under it, take all the dirt someplace, put in three, four feet of crushed stone under it, put pipes under it, do this layer cake. It's all under drains and everything. So that's kind of, there's your process and there's your schedule. Let's see what the next one is. I forget. That's it, okay. So what we'll do, and you guys can decide how this works, will... Kevin's here. He knows all things turf and I know all things process. So we will have discussion from however you want to run it.
Yeah, on your turf field, are you putting the pellets in there with the turf? The sample you gave us was just the grass alone. I mean, well, the plastic.
So yes, the, all the packages will include the infill, or include the infill as well. You have a general sand and SBR is option one. The other option would be sand and the small tubes that I sent around.
They must not have reached you. You can see them later, they're here.
There, that's a geocool product. That's a calcium carbonate that will lower the field temperature by 50 degrees. But no, all of that, that's an accurate question, but yes, absolutely. All the infill is in with all of our estimates that we presented today.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the stadium field going to be only for football or can we set it where everything can be played on the stadium? Okay.
That would be also a multipurpose field, yes.
The whole idea behind the artificial turf is use it for all sports all the time as long as you can. And the bonus there is you own the lights and the fence already. So if you got the turf, you can run it as much as you can, you know, schedule it. Six in the morning till eight at night if you want.
It would also function for the fan capades that occur as well.
The only restriction that presents itself in a stadium would be, at times, the width is minimized for a full, full-width soccer field. But with the current configuration, I don't foresee that happening, so.
Right above Field Two, there's a practice football field. Any reason we didn't look at that?
Yeah, I think, actually, I think your Field Two is the practice football field, I believe, if you look at it.
You can see the line, you can see the wear from that.
Okay, let me go back and see if we can talk about it because...
There's two of them, they're side by side there. They were both used for practice.
Yeah, we, because as you see, Field Two's already not working. It's truncating itself, so we didn't go any further. It starts to, because of the topography, it's kind of coming into a wedge. So, and the other thing, we're kind of high on Field One for multipurpose sports because it's attainable from the parking lot. You know, it's pretty clear, pretty close. And there's a paved, the big paved driveway that'll give us access, foot traffic to it. But our instructions were, "One, two, and stadium."
What could you tell us about the health risks with the SBR, I guess it is, or the rubber crumble? The, I know it's been brought up in the media with the health risks that are associated with SBR. Now, I'm not, I'm not a doctor to be able to speak to, you know, that research. That's where we are offering, 95% of the fields that are put in the U.S. still have that infill product. Now, we are seeing in Europe that they are starting to ban the SBR product. That is why we have the calcium carbonate that we can use as a substitute for that field that I've included in all of our pricing packages. I didn't, I just had to assume highest-case scenario here and present the different options. But yes, you're seeing it in Europe. There are concerns. But yes, you're seeing it in Europe, there are concerns, there is other conversation that, you know, that the SBR, there's other, you know, tire byproducts, and this is a very small chunk of the, really, the microplastic problems that we're seeing across, you know, different environments, but that is a conversation that, I wanted to present some different options, I don't have as much intel about those risks that you're asking about.
Is the second option just as good?
Yes.
As far as performance?
Absolutely, yeah. See, the performance of the field, the, it's all about the, we want to get a field to play as close to a natural grass field as possible, and drain and recover in a faster way. Now, what we've seen from the GeoCool is that you have its, the same shock continuation and playability that we're finding on a natural grass field, and yes, from a cost perspective, we're, it is a slightly more expensive field than the SBR, but I have the GeoCool built into the prices that I presented tonight.
What's the shock specifications on that? You know, as far as the shock on the field for these girls?
So the shock specification for, you're finding it more heavily in your higher contact sports, where you're making more impact with the ground throughout the, throughout the, you know, games and practices, but a G-max rating of 140, you know, 129 to 140 is what we want to see over the lifespan of the field. And with the pad in place, that is where we're able to maintain that, because we have a stationary product underneath the grass, or the synthetic turf fibers, so that is where we're going to be able to maintain that 129 to 140 rating, and then we just have our annual maintenance to ensure that we're not allowing for the infill to become too compacted.
Okay, but that also, if that field's going to be played on, what is the life expectancy on the G-fac, the G-max rating over a period of time, if you're going to have four events, sporting events on that field?
There is routine maintenance that the school staff, the district staff, will perform with the grooming equipment that is in each of the packages, and then if we, what we've seen is if we're able to implement, we'll do a G-max testing on an annual basis to ensure that we're still within that range. If we're falling too close to that 129, and the field is becoming too soft, then we have to come in and bring in a little bit more infill. But we haven't had to do that on any of the fields that we've had, there have been some weather events that have caused some migration of infill, but if we do our regular routine maintenance that we'll introduce the district staff to, as well as the annual maintenance and the deep decompression, we don't have a fluctuation in that G-max. And if we were to see a fluctuation, we would just have to introduce, we have attic stock that we supply with the initial install, and then we would install that attic stock, the sand in rubber or sand in GeoCool, back into the field, and that's why we do the annual, annual testing to make sure it is safe.
Thank you.
If you have to install that, what would that cost be? Because that's not going to be in this cost that you gave us.
We would be able to build it into the annual maintenance, you know, if we do have to put in with the sand, you're talking, it's one man for eight hours, you know, that's what we would have to factor in. So it would just be an added piece to the maintenance, but I have, it's a rare occasion that we'd have to see that. But you're talking a couple, $2,000, $3,000 to have the infill reinstalled, if we had to, you know, and not full depth, but if we had to touch up the infill to ensure the G-max is appropriate.
Okay, these costs that you have here, that's just figures out there, that's not definite, because if we had to hire somebody, if we had to hire somebody, our costs are going to be totally different than that.
Which cost are we--
Let me get up here. What we're, what we're proposing here is the Keystone Purchasing Network, which is what you did when you bought the grandstands at the stadium. That purchasing price is negotiated upfront, and you don't have to go out to bid, and therefore you can get the numbers that you're looking to get. So the numbers that we're proposing should be numbers on the outside edge of where you would be.
That would be hiring somebody on the outside to come in and do it, and not one of our people doing it?
Oh, you're talking about maintenance?
Yes, the maintenance.
Okay, I'm gonna let Kevin address the, I think you instruct while you tell me.
I'm sorry.
My misunderstanding.
No, so for the maintenance, if we have the attic stock, it is an option for your grounds crew to groom that in with their equipment, but if there was, it's a rare occasion that we have to reintroduce extra infill, and if we had to do that, we would just engage with the district for, you know, a small maintenance, it's not a change order, it'd just be a small maintenance proposal.
But we have nobody that is qualified to do this.
If it's, there are districts that have a more robust staff, I'm not as familiar, so I can look into it deeper, and if it's something that we were to come in and engage with the district in, we would offer a proposal to come in and get it up to grade, but it's truly a minimal cost in the upkeep of the field with adding the extra infill.
And these are just bare minimum costs, not projected outward?
So, I just saw on the same page, the, when you're asking for the minimum costs, are you talking about the--
The upkeep, that we have to have somebody do, or we have to hire somebody else outside to do?
That's what, with the annual maintenance package that we have, which we have up on, so in the, the groomer is a piece of equipment that the district staff will run on that field on a regular basis through each of the competition seasons.
That's something we would have to purchase.
The top-line item, which I had, so I have that built into our budgets, so each of our line item pieces, the $15,000. And now, the deep cleaning and G-max testing, that would be a separate annual $8,000 cost, and that's what I'm displaying here for an annual maintenance package. So we would take it, we would come through the field with a groomer that would essentially agitate all of the infill, so it, we'd lose that, you know, compressive quality after, you know, 1,000, 2,000 hours of play. So that's the only annual cost that I'm showing here, would be an $8,000 amount for deep cleaning and decompression, and the G-max testing that we would do to make sure that the field is in its safe parameters, so.
Also, the anticipated lifespan, that seems kind of high to what I've been looking at, the 10 to 12 years.
With the appropriate maintenance and the right products, this is absolutely what we are seeing, you know? And if, you know, depending upon how many hours we're on a field, we've seen up to, you know, 13, 14 years, but this is the average that we see across thousands of installations. Yes, there can be a failed installation that I have seen in the industry that would be less, but the fields that we put in with the products that we stand behind are getting 10 to 12 years.
And what local school districts would they be?
The failed installations?
No, the good ones.
The local school districts that we put in, right now, we're putting in the baseball field at Quakertown, as well as the baseball multipurpose field at Malvern Prep School, we installed Katusakua's stadium field, those are the most recent local fields that we've put in here. William Tennant is another one that we were able to work with, so, off the top of my head, those are the key ones that we're working on right now.
I think the question was more, can you show us a school that's got a 10 to 12-year field?
Oh, absolutely, and I can compile that information and send it out, yeah. But no, I, so is that, is that what the group is hearing, that you're not, you're not seeing that longevity?
Well, it's just a question she's asking, like, show us one that, you said 10 to 12 years, show us one that's lasting that long.
Absolutely, no, I can put together that information and send it back, yeah. I didn't come prepared with that, yeah. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I talked to a couple of the school districts, and they said, you know, they're seven, eight years out of theirs, so I want, just know how-- What are the other turf fields that we're talking about as far as competitors, or is this the only one you sell, basically?
So, as a company, Miller represents over 90 brands, right? We really try to strive to come in with the best product and the most cost-effective product for our districts. We vet all of our products to ensure that we're not having product failures, the manufacturer's going to stand behind a warranty that they implement, but what I'm presenting tonight is the largest turf manufacturer in the world, Tencati, the company's been around for 300 years, they have manufacturing capacity in Georgia, and their quality, they came direct to market with their product that all the other manufacturers were purchasing, and that's what we thought, felt as a group was the best product to offer and what we are currently installing. But if there are other products that the district would like to talk about, we can discuss that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is the warranty you do offer? I mean, I realize you're not going to get a 10-year unlimited mileage warranty, but--
The warranty is an eight-year warranty.
So seven years, you gotta tear the heck out of it.
Did you strike that for the record?
No, if you, if you start to dig into the weeds and the quality of the turf, if you look at the quality of the backing and the turf fibers and the coatings, that's where different manufacturers will separate themselves. And what we are seeing with the Tencati turfs is, we are absolutely seeing 10 to 12 years, if not beyond that. The most important thing is the deep decompression and the annual maintenance, and just making sure that we're taking care of that field in the appropriate way. A lot of fields, districts think that they can come in and put it in and forget about it, right? Hey, I'm saving this money, nobody has to touch it, and that's where we do see, you know, individuals get caught up and only see, you know, a seven-year lifespan, but not with the appropriate maintenance, absolutely.
That's what the lower bidder gets you, so that's what I'm asking about, because I talked to other school district people, and they're telling me about what their systems are lasting, and we're not talking 10 to 12 on their stuff.
No, for the--
Like I said, I don't know who makes it.
For the premium products, we are seeing the, which Tencati is an absolute, it's a higher-end product, that's where they're standing behind, we're seeing that lifespan. There are other ways and more, less expensive manufacturing processes, and they're also coming in with less infill in the turf. My, all the packages that I put forth tonight have three pounds of sand, three pounds of rubber with the GeoCool, it's actually three and a half pounds of GeoCool and three pounds of sand. That's the, when you talk about low bid, that, those are some of the games that I've seen played, where they'll, they'll take down the quality of the turf, they'll take down the amount of infill, and the district isn't really getting that, you know, maximum value out of their product.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How long has this company been around?
Miller?
No, the Tencati.
Tencati was founded, it's a 300-year-old company.
300-year-old company. With this type of turf field, what has the safety of it been, like for injuries, board injuries to the students?
It's something that's continuously researched, but with that, the sand and rubber composition, it's getting, it's very comparable to the playability and the safety of a natural grass field, as long as we are appropriately maintaining it, grading the field out, avoiding any abuse if they come in and put a tent on the field, or pour out a large, they use one of the large drums for ballast of water, and I've seen them dump that out on the field, it causes a divot. Appropriately maintained fields will be absolutely safe and, you know, ensure the playability comparable to that of a natural grass field.
Okay, one other question, because I think this is the property that we're having issues with right now, so I need to know how high that fence is going to be, because we can't have any more issues there.
The fence is what, the fencing along the back line is what we had spoken about during our review of the presentation, and I know that Jay, you had mentioned that, you know, that fence was pretty high to begin with, but we are, you know, seeing problems, you know, specifically with lacrosse, those balls kind of go all over the place, yeah. And, you know, so that is what we're referencing, I know that we have those, I don't know how many foot, poles up that have the other fence, but, yeah, that's the question.
What we put into the pricing is about a 10-foot fence, which is not going to do what you want it to do. The fence that we're proposing in the gates protect the field from what he talked about, having the wrong footwear or abusing it because you're not treating the field as you should. We can add, you notice, everyone had a contingency, and that's part of the deal, getting in front of everybody and finding out, I know, you have a neighbor that's very interested in what you do, we know him well, he's been there a long time. We would add that fence as an add-on to, out of the contingency, just so we're totally transparent, the fences and gates proposed are about 10 feet tall, they go around the field, and they're there to protect it from being abused by people that use the wrong footwear or in any other way start to mess with it. The upgrade to a fence, there's probably enough, if you don't have miles of this stuff, we can probably get out of the contingency, a piece at the end where the crossballs are probably going to the neighbors, you're probably okay with them going toward Bear Stadium, so it's, not Bear Stadium, toward the baseball stadium, so--
We definitely need to protect that property.
Understood, understood, and we wanted to be clear, we went to the feasibility stage, but not to the design stage, and what we would do at that point, and I bet the township will say the same thing, we would get into that, some of that engineering detail. It's not in that price that you see, but it kind of is because there's a contingency. If you want 100 miles of it, we're going to up the price to, we would show you where it's coming from, but right now, the fences are not going to solve the problem that you had talked about. It is solvable, probably comes out of the contingency, but it's not in that price outright as a line item.
The pervious soil on the Bear Stadium field, where are you going to go with the water, water management?
What happens is, if you could picture kind of a swimming pool, except it's full of rocks, we're going to collect the water under each field right where it stops. Each field now drains, the stadium field has a drain that actually goes down the field and ends up draining by the tennis courts, that, the blue image that you see down in that corner. That pipe system actually goes to the inside of the track. All we have to do is get enough volume in that stadium area to hold that water and just release it at the same rate that it's going out that pipe now. So if you would picture, under every one of those fields, I could draw another blue image, each of them will become, except Field 2, which I don't think you should even touch, it's just not going to work for you, it's a mini retention pond under the field. And it's kind of a neat thing, because we need a lot of stone already to start to get the field, if you didn't need to drain it at all, and they said, you know what, we don't care about stormwater, you're going to have, I don't know, what, a foot of stone under there anyway?
Yes, a minimum.
A minimum, six, 18, so we're saying, okay, we'll go down three, four feet, we'll get little bigger rocks so you got voids between it, we'll collect the water, and the cool thing about it, every one of those things has a pipe near it that we can discharge, because every one of those fields now is being drained, but it's just running off. Each field will become its own retention pond, and that's the engineering, how much stone, what size stone to get, how much void, to collect water for how long, to let it out one end, so it's not flowing in that pipe any faster than whatever the engineers, a grief needs to happen. Thank you so much. This would be a good night to try stormwater management, wouldn't it? See how, see how things are, we ought to go out there and see how those fields are doing today. Thank you so much, it's good to be back.
Thank you.
Discussion between the board?
Do you have any business cards?
Certainly.
Do you have business cards?
Certainly.
Do you give them to Scott, I'll get it all--
Kevin, did you want to leave these here, or are you going to take them? He went around the corner, can you get them?
I can leave.
Okay, I'll tell you what, we will leave these with Nick, and that'll give everybody an opportunity, it looks like in that quick fix, like you didn't see the infills, obviously, because they're in one of these, we'll leave these two boxes with Nick, and he'll decide how everybody can kind of see and peek and chill and tell with it. Also, then we have to drag them out in the rain. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Mr. Schill?
Thank you.
It's good to be back.
Hello, I'm Scott Schill, Director of Facilities and Operations, I'm here to just give an update on some of the things happening in facilities. We heard about turf, which that's-- We heard about turf, which that's exciting and new. Can you hear me, can you hear me now? Better? So I wanted to go over some of the capital projects that we've completed throughout the year. Uh, we did the Gasboy upgrade, which I presented to you guys, I think, back in November. That's an exciting upgrade to our computer management of how we distribute fuel. We completed the Jace three and four upgrades at the high school for our building management system. We are working with the Legion on continuing our Bear Stadium bleacher project with converting it from wooden bleachers to metal, so that they'll last for many more years. Uh, Middle School East, we're working on the sidewalk repair where the sidewalk's sloping, so we want to get that done. We're going to work when the weather breaks in the spring. We're doing a P A clock replacement, which is actually scheduled this month, next week, on Monday. We're doing parking lot repair at both Middle School East and Washington. Um, they're waiting for the spring and early summer. We completed carpet removal at Washington and it's all V C T, so we have no more carpeted classrooms there. We're continuing the window panel replacements of the aluminum panels that sit above the windows, which are deteriorating. We are at Bortown Elementary School, we right now are working on the L G I H V A C system, which is a uh, new uh, V R F system, which should greatly help our electric bill. Uh, at C E S, we replaced the kitchen windows. At Earl, we replaced the carpet, we still have a couple of classrooms there to continue with. We're replacing the nurses um, H V A C unit, but we're not going to do that until the roof completion in early spring, we just ran out of time with cold weather. G E S's Gilbertsville's roof was completed, the M B portion, which turned out beautiful and it looks fantastic. The and we're replacing, we 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 replaced the domestic hot water heater there. At New Hanover, we've replaced the day tank for our generator, which allows us to hold one day's worth of fuel. And we're also, the sidewalk repair got pushed back until spring because we didn't have enough time to do the porch and the sidewalk. So those are our current projects. These are some future projects I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. At Middle School East, the chillers there are almost twenty years old, which is the lifespan of those. Right now, the lead time for a chiller is fifty-two weeks. So if we ordered it today, today, we wouldn't get it for a year. So I want to get this started so that way we can get them ordered and, you know, move with that project. Gilbertsville and Bo- and New Hanover, right now, where I R scanning the roofs, looking for wet spots to see which one is in most need of repair and then uh, scarify and refoam those sections. At Earl, we want to replace the E P D M roof, uh, which is the smaller sections around with ballast on top. And at New Hanover, upper Frederick, we have to repair the fuel tank because we failed uh, some of the D E P standards. We're going to immediately repair the sump, but there are uh, the A T C, which Automatic Tank Control, needs to be replaced as well.
I can just jump in and add that all of these capital projects, we will be looking to evaluate um, new grant opportunity that was recently approved um, under Act thirty-four. It does allow for um, a matching grant contribution of some sort. A twenty-five percent local match, we would have to fund. Um, it'd have to be an approved project to the state. Um, it covers roofing projects, H V A C, some safety upgrades. Um, so we're that, all that has just developed at the state level, so we are closely watching that for developments. We'll be applying for um, any grant opportunities related to these capital projects.
That's that's a hundred million dollar bucket, correct?
Correct.
I I didn't find the applications yet, I was looking, but I don't think they're out yet.
They're not out yet.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Patty, what percentage of of the grant was there?
So the local district about to fund twenty-five percent of the project.
Twenty-five percent of the project?
Of the project, it's going to be a competitive process, it's going to be based on a number of factors. Um, identified school wealth and different factors that P D E is um, has not yet released full details on, but it's going to be based on a combination of competitive and wealth factors.
You think we stand a chance of getting some of that?
Well, we're going to really try, yeah.
I mean
We're going to be first to apply, so hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
So to continue on, we uh, with our staff, we've had a lot of um, turnover based on retirements. I don't want to say a lot of turnover, but we have a lot of our our staff who have been there here for a long time retiring. So it's been challenging to find uh, new uh, staff. But we did hit a pretty good stretch there and we only have three, three open positions. We have a full-time grounds, two custodial and a part-time ground, so three and a half currently. So I think that's pretty good, from when I started, we had a lot more. So our staffing structure, we we work in a a higher higher graph. I don't know how it's a word, a high graphical, high graphical structure. So um, I, we have heads that oversee the day-to-day operations in the buildings and also of the grounds. So this leads into my grounds department part of this. So the grounds department has had the most turnover in the department as far as staff. We have a very energetic crew right now that is really trying hard and and learning everything they can. This, we meet, I meet personally with the head of grounds maybe once or twice a month as he needs to come see me. Depending on what his needs are, I want to support him and make sure he's succeeding in what he does. We had a uh, brief discussion before the snow, because this was his first snowfall in the district. We were out here on Sunday and we cleared the district in two hours, two and a half hours, I thought that was pretty good. It wasn't a lot of snow, but for a new crew, I think that went really well. We have put uh, extra snow equipment on some of our trucks, like extra solters and whatnot that we have, that we haven't used in the past to provide a parachute for our grounds people so that they can concentrate on plowing and learning to plow in the correct way. As far as how do we dictate summer projects or anything that the grounds crew is involved in, we coordinate with the head of grounds and try to find the best time in their schedule because they also coordinate with Nick and all and with all their athletic events. So we look for a period of time for five bar, which is the stuff under a playground. We started getting the bark blower, which helps save our guys backs and wear and tear on their bodies. Filling cracks on pavement helps out because we don't have to spray them. So we choose a week or two and and we do that. And that's all in conjunction with myself, Nick and the head of grounds. Other than that, if there's any questions or comments?
How's the equipment, like, is there anything that is like we're looking at replacing next year or is the stuff pretty good shape?
We've been keeping it in pretty good shape, we've gotten rid of a lot of our older equipment. We actually were able to sell it on municipal, which we got a couple of dollars that we could put back into other equipment. Everything seems to be okay, our tractors are old, but I mean, they're diesel tractors, they can last a very long time. We don't run them that often that they're in great need of repair.
Well, thank you very much for all you're doing. I did notice your crew out here salting the back part of the parking lot, which was great because we do have students parking there now and I don't want to see any of our students fall back there, so thank you for that. Also, with our grounds, we have hired a mowing company, so that takes away from our people not needing to be there for that also.
Correct.
That's correct, right?
Yeah.
So that frees them up to do other work for us also.
Yeah, we went from a buildings, a decentralized building-only grounds crew to a a a team model and this was done back in twenty eighteen, this was long before I was here. Because we brought a mowing company in to take away mowing, so they could work more on athletic activities, bushes, tree trimming, stuff that really needed specialized grounds work instead of mowing grass. Any more questions? All right, thank you. I don't mean to be rude, but we have a couple of buildings that are taking on water, so I'm going to go to them, okay? All right, thank you.
Next up, the middle school program of study?
Sorry, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Dr. Maori and I are going to go over um, some updates about the middle school program of studies. This this one, far right, got it, okay. So the first update is going to be about general music. We're going to embed a modern band unit uh, into both to sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Uh, students are going to be able to experience a variety of different instruments. Guitar, ukulele, bass, keyboard and other modern instruments. Um, this is going to be at no cost to the district. Our uh, our music department is going to coordinate with the music league and try to acquire these instruments.
Good evening. The other minor changes that we have in our program of studies revolves around math. Over the past several years, we have been realigning our sequencing on the secondary level for math and we're at the end of it. So we're happy about that, we have things lined up that this is the last year of any corrections that we're doing. So when I talk about some math revisions, it has nothing really to do with the instructional side of it, but some more of the application pieces that are going to help us get caught up with what we need to do for our students. So we don't have any significant changes coming. We are making two revisions though that are embedded within our program of studies. One is a revision to ensure that our students have the necessary algebraic skills to be able to move forward over the sequencing of their math classes uh, once they get into that algebra track for math. The second uh, revolves around the awarding of credits at the high school level only for classes. When previously we've been doing that when we were junior high and never made any sort of correction when we moved up into the middle school structure. So to break those down a little bit further, if I can direct your attention to the presentation, this verbiage here that you have on the screen is what's actually written in the middle school program of studies, which is our proposal, that revolves around the algebra and moving forward in algebra instruction. So a student could take algebra at seventh grade, it's a very small percentage of our students. More of them take it take it during eighth grade and then the remainder of our students usually are around ninth grade or some sort of combination thereof. So what we are proposing is the importance of having those algebraic skills mastered really necessitates this. So we've put this verbiage in that said, uh, at the end of Algebra One, whether it's in seventh grade or eighth grade, a student, should a student have the grade of eighty percent or higher but does not pass the Keystone exam and scores a basic? The student is still going to advance forward into geometry, whether geometry would be eighth grade or their ninth grade year. Now, when it comes to retaking or remediating the Keystone exam, there are some different options that students can take to be able to satisfy that Keystone pathway, that graduation requirement. So um, we haven't ignored the need for that, but we are just highlighting the importance of, again, showing some skill, showing the skill and proficiency with a high enough score for the grade as well as getting a basic on the Keystone. Now, say a student has a grade, a final grade below an eighty percent and scores the basic on the Keystone and does not pass it. We are saying that the student is not going to move forward into geometry, but will take algebra again the next year, whether it is in eighth grade or into ninth grade. The next scenario is if a student scores below basic on the Keystone exam. Regardless of um, what the student uh, scores for the year, whatever their grade is, if a student is below basic on the Keystone exam, we're saying that they are required to take algebra again the next year, whether it be again in eighth grade or in ninth grade. Now, should a student score proficient or advanced on the Keystone exam but fail the course itself? That student will need to remediate, as is our current practice for all of our classes, if they don't get a passing grade for the year. And they can remediate usually over the summer. And if they do that, then they'll be able to move forward into geometry. Otherwise, if they don't do that, they will still need to retake Algebra One to pass the class. However, the Keystone doesn't need to be addressed anymore because they've already passed that. So the reason why we're doing these, the rationale behind that is because of how important algebra is. It's a foundational course for our math sequencing as students go through their high school years. Early struggles in algebra are gonna continue to evolve and grow and become more of a problem as the student moves on to geometry and Algebra Two. And we saw and we've seen that with some students who at the time, when they're either in seventh or eighth grade, for whatever reason, they're showing all the signs that they're ready for algebra. They they go into the course, but then they start to develop struggles over time for a variety of reasons. And when they go through, um, they get by through algebra, they get by through geometry and Algebra Two and they're really struggling. But they pass that and now they have two, one or two more years left where they need to take a math course. And that's when we run into some problems with students who have just pushed through a little early and not ready and what do we do with those students? So here, we're going to be able to catch those students at the middle school level before it becomes any sort of issue whether it comes to credits or their G P A or their transcript. If a student in seventh or eighth grade takes algebra and is not successful and we have to repeat it, there still is time to prepare that student and be on track to potentially reach calculus, which in a slide or two shows the math uh, sequencing of our classes so that you can understand that if you want to go and look about at that a little bit further. But there really is no need to push that algebra in continuation of that train if the student is not there. So that's why we've put in these changes. On the screen right now and in your packets is the sequencing of our math courses and what the kind of student we're talking about that this would impact is not the two columns on the left, not the far column on the right. The far column on the right is usually our strongest students that take Algebra One in seventh grade. And those students are usually doing very well throughout their whole math history. You know, from middle school into high school. But we look to the column to the second to the right, this is where we have been identifying students that have gone through algebra their eighth grade year. They don't have the strength, uh, or that they haven't really mastered the skills and this is where we need to reevaluate how far and how fast that we need to push those students. They can still double up in math courses if they wish. They can um, take it year by year as well and be on a track that is more appropriate for them and their success to be successful in math. But those are the reasons why we think we need to put in that clarification and have that somewhat of a gatekeeper for our students to make sure that they're ready to keep moving forward with, again, without impacting their transcript or their G P A while they're in high school. The second revision that we're making that impacts math is the credits. That students will not receive high school credit for math courses that they are taking in middle school. Currently, if a student has taken algebra or geometry their eighth grade year, they're awarding, they can earn a math credit that is applied to the graduation credits. Uh, the completion, so we are not uh, going to be awarding that anymore. We still will reflect the completion of that course as well as the student's grade on the transcript. So that colleges can see that, it still promotes the success of our students. Colleges know when they see students that are taking Algebra Two, um, pre-calculus, they and but they don't see algebra or geometry on it. They know they've taken in middle school, but yet we want to highlight the successes of our students, even though it won't impact the G P A, which it never has, and they won't have any credits on there. It still will be reflected on that transcript. And the rationale behind this is uh, as slightly mentioned before. One, the high school transcript and credits should be earned while a student is in high school, plain and simple. This is a care, what we're doing is a carryover from when we were junior high and we had ninth graders in our um, in our junior high buildings. We have talked to our colleagues, both in Berks County as well as other surrounding counties, and this is no longer happening in schools and middle school. Students are not earning those math credits uh, for algebra, geometry while in middle school. So we're correcting something that should have been corrected a little while ago. So those are the the few revisions that we have in our program of studies. Uh, you have the full document that was shared to you, it does outline and give you a pretty good view of what our courses are and what the students are learning. And we hope you understand the reasons for this year's, you know, revisions and uh, we'll be able to um, understand and support that as we move forward. Ms. Scott?
So we are not offering any language in middle school?
We currently do not offer any world languages.
Okay, and what was your reason for that? I know we were in, we had discussed it once before, but can you explain why we would not offer that in middle school?
The world languages was something several years ago that they're changed the programming within the 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 course of our district. What we talked about when we were sharing uh, an overview here is that the only credits that we found in schools in our area that are awarding credits was at Y Missing Area Junior High School. They have a combination junior and senior high school within one building. So in talking with them, they said, hey, our kids that are taking the math classes, we still don't give credits to them in eighth grade. However, the ones that do take uh, world language in eighth grade, we do give them that credit. It's the same teachers, in the same building, it's the same curriculum. That was their explanation as to why those students earned high school credits for world language in eighth grade.
Okay, well, I'm not really concerned about them getting a credit so much as them having the opportunity to start a language at a younger age.
And and quite honestly, it would be too late for us to, well, it it could, it it would be something that we
that we would have to work, but it's a budgetary item. There, there is not staffing in place for world language at the middle level. That was removed probably three, three years ago at, at least. And so, budgetarily, that would be something that would have to be placed back into the budget for the staffing, so that we would have, if we even would have the availability of hiring people that would be credentialed to be able to teach the languages, but it would be, it would have to be a part of the budget process. And then, I'm not sure how Middle School East or West would be able to implement that as part of their schedule right away. It was typically something that was only offered to eighth graders, and I believe that it was aligned with a double period of ELA. Boy, I'm doing well with my senior memory. And so, it would have to, you know, it could probably fit back into that, and it was an option where I don't think everybody had to participate in that language, but it was there. So, it, it would have to be a part of the 24-25 budget.
So, yeah, I understand. We have to bring in staffing for that. What my concern is more is the education of our children, and foreign language is very important, even at a younger age, even to have exploratory classes in maybe third, fourth, and fifth is important. It doesn't have to run a week. It could be once every two weeks or something. They're exploring a language for a trimester, and, and I realize this is probably not where we need to discuss this, but if we're talking budget, you know, as a board, we really should consider what's best for the students. I think with the math and what you've done here shows that we're working towards that, but there are a lot. Now, I went through, I don't, I, I do look at other schools and see what they're doing, okay? Now, I didn't go through 10 or 12 because it takes time, and it's very hard to find things on some of the school websites.
It is.
Our website is very good at finding things compared to some of the ones I could not find, okay? But I've been looking at Boyer Town's a little bit longer than theirs, but, you know, I can at least find it. But they have languages three and four in seventh and eighth grade in Montgomery County Schools and in Berks County Schools. So, budgetary things, I think we could figure that out. What's more important to me is the kids getting introduced to a language at younger ages. It's, they just use their mind, they have all kinds of research on it, and I've looked at various sites of how elementary, if they have, you know, like a world cultures. You call it world cultures, you're not going to grade them for it. You have it maybe as the fifth class, you know, you have, I don't know where you fit it. I know you can fit it in. You don't need a language teacher in elementary, because I know that Mr. Stout could find the resources to teach a very limited hello, how are you, in French and Spanish and just conversations, where's the street, you know, they just teach limited things, but what they're also teaching is the culture of that country. They're teaching the, what they do for their national holidays. So, it's, it's a very creative kind of way to get your, your younger kids, elementary, engaged in hearing all these different languages and having it run. There's, it's, there's so many things. I don't want to take up the board's time, but I don't think that's a major budgetary thing, in my eyes. To get that going, I don't think it is. We could talk about it and see, we were going to talk about it, but then, you know, life happens. So, but I really do feel that in middle school and, and we should be starting these kids off with language, at least introducing it. In sixth grade, you do world cultures. That might be a place where you can flip to doing Spanish the first quarter on, not, I realize you have, there's a lot in the world, but take one class every two weeks and just concentrate on introducing the language, the culture, the nation, the holidays, whatever there is about the people that makes them unique, because I really do feel that that's just a creative way to teach our kids, and maybe we do something like that. I don't know. But language is important, starting at young, just opens the kids' minds, it makes them more social. It may, they even said something about them being better multitaskers. I don't know. I'm not a neuroscientist, so I can't tell you why that happens, but there's just a lot of evidence that it's a good thing for our education.
And I'm going to speak for the administration and say that they would love nothing more than to add an additional staff member there, and they would have put it in their program of study if they knew, you know, full force that that would be something that budgetarily we would be, you know, doing. So, they're, they're standing here reporting what they do have the ability to provide, and, and we do appreciate your feedback, though.
Yeah, I'm not being critical. I'm just wondering why.
It's not taken that way at all.
I'm not being critical at all, no.
We, we're excited about the potential that you have, the desire to bring more of our world language back.
I would like to see that. I think, I mean, you know.
Yep. Thank you.
I too would like language. However, are, what of our rates of our teachers right now? Do we have enough teachers for everything that we have now?
Mr. White, on day 10?
Sorry about that.
We have 6.5 open vacancies currently, which for a district our size is, is pretty good. We just, actually, I was talking to Mr. Scott about it. We got our PA REEPA lobbying back. We've been having for a couple of weeks. And over the weekend, we probably had about 20 applicants for the five roles that we have.
So, we are lacking staffing for our languages, so that's one of the issues.
No, I'm not, that's not just our line.
Oh, okay.
That's district one.
Okay.
6.5 for the whole district.
But we are lacking.
We have one ELA position, not a foreign language. We have one ELA that's open.
So, but there is still some that we could be doing better with, but. And Mr. Mary, I might like to talk to you after the school meeting on our algebra, because I have some questions and concern, which I don't want to go into now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are there, there's still clubs in middle school, right? Would that be somewhere until we can address it in the budget that foreign language could be introduced, like as a club?
To answer the question, is it a possibility? We have the structure for it.
Yeah.
We have, we have the period 10, the opportunity for that. Do you have the student interest? Do you have the teachers that would be able to create a purposeful learning experience? Those are some questions that we have to figure out. Then we look at the teachers' responsibilities as well during that club time versus instruction as well. There are a lot of questions, a lot of answers that need to happen, but the short answer is, we have the structure.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of, there's a lot that needs to go into that of being able to say, is that, you know, feasible, and is that the interest and?
Yeah, I just was thinking it might be a good starting point or a compromise until. The other question I had, I was thinking some more about the math credits. Some other districts I was looking at only require three math credits to graduate, and we require four, correct?
Correct.
So, there is, I see a possibility for our super accelerated students to not have four classes, math classes, when they get to the high school.
Well.
So, there, could there be some kind of, I don't know, like compromise, like if you finish Calc BC, then you have, should have enough credits to graduate?
The, there are enough options when you start looking at the statistics and the different levels of statistics that we offer. So, you'd be veering off of that algebra, calculus track, and for our most advanced student, who on occasion, we have one or two a year, taking Algebra II their eighth grade year, their ninth grade year, they would be taking pre-calculus, their 10th grade year, they could take AB Calculus, 11th grade year, BC Calculus, and then we have different statistics, currently, different statistic options, whether it's AP, DE, the dual enrollment, that a student could take. The option is there, and the opportunity is there for us to identify. We had a conversation about, you know, potential linear algebra or other types of, like the calculus III to look at in the future.
Yeah.
So, those are some potentials that are out there. But when it come to the bare bones of requiring the four credits, we do have the offering that we can give a student. It just goes the.
I just, I know there are some students that are capable of.
Sure.
Finishing pre-calc in middle school, and there's some students that don't even need pre-calc. I mean, I appreciate all the safety nets we have for our students that are struggling. I really do, but I also think we need to invest in our high performers. I think that's good for our community, it's good for our country. I just feel like if we're going to address, you know, the struggling students, we need to just make sure that we're not holding anybody back, because I'm afraid, I'm afraid there will be this potential of, of telling kids they shouldn't accelerate because they'll run out of classes in math.
And, and, and we won't, that's not the perspective at all, the desire, but rather be able to guide the pathway where they can go specifically for math. We have those options as well. But that's why we're awfully proud at the high school, the continued growth of the DE programs, the dual enrollment, and the students that are earning these college credits while satisfying their high school credits and are graduating with the ability to go to college and reduce their time in college, should they choose. They need, the cost, you're right, we're, we're offering these DE classes at a significant cost, and we have students that could graduate and get their bachelor's within three years or three and a half years, which is not uncommon as well. So, we are, the high school continues to develop the, the DE offerings.
Yeah, the DE offerings aren't as challenging as the AP offerings.
Correct.
So, for our highest students.
I wouldn't say, I want to catch myself saying incorrect. AP is very rigorous, very tough as well, but the, the benefits as well, we want to look at developing the students, getting them ready for the college career, they have those college experience, the college credits, that are going to be able to open up more opportunities as they continue their college instruction, and that's a good thing for the students to have in their back pocket, those options.
So, this is for Mrs. Torsia. So, what you're saying is that we have to put this on our budget for this coming June, and then we can attempt to hire a teacher. We don't want to not do something unless we've, we can't, we have to at least attempt that and hope that we can get whatever we decide we're going to do or not do, or whatever. So, it would be budgetary, it would go through budget first, and then this, it could change, though. You could, you could make it work for 24-25. If we got the teacher, you would be able to deal with that scheduling of a class or two, or if we just did it for eighth grade to start off, would that work in the middle school schedule?
The potential is there to make it work.
Okay.
So, what did Hesse say? Give me the pictures, I'll provide you the war. So.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to the middle school principals, Mr. Dr. Maori and Mrs. Dumbarowski. Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to review the proposed 24-25 school district calendar. So, breaking news to the young ladies that are up front, that you get to see what we're proposing for the start of school year next year. So, really, the, the big change for next school year would be the, the starting date, which we are proposing to be August 26th, Monday, August 26th. You can see that Labor Day is started as, as much earlier on Monday, September 2nd. Another proposed change is we do have a professional development day in November. We chose to put it on Election Day this year, so that we would have a professional development day, students would be off and just, you know, kind of accommodate whatever our needs might be focused around November 5th, 2024. Christmas, there are no changes with our, our Thanksgiving break, but the winter break, we would be proposing to start on the 23rd, because typically, we would bring in, that would be a half day. There's really not any sense in bringing staff and students in for a half day in advance of Christmas Eve. We will go through January 1st, return on the 2nd, although there was some discussion today at a superintendent's meeting in Berks County, some school districts looking at elongating that Christmas, that, that, that holiday break during December and including the 2nd and 3rd. It's something that we have discussed a little bit here, but, you know, right now, we're, we're just planning on returning to, back to school on the 2nd. The remainder of the calendar is, is pretty much the same, with the exception of when we get into April, Easter holiday is much later, and because of the holiday, the winter break, in December, we have shortened that Easter break. Students would be in school Monday, Tuesday, and half a day of, of the, of Wednesday, and then we would be out, or students and staff would be out the 17th, 18th, and the 21st. And then we have a proposed end date of Friday, June the 6th. So, it, it has the same number of professional development days. There's been no increase in, in our half days, and, yeah, that, that's pretty much it. We presented it to our administration. They felt like that was a, a good calendar, but feedback, go ahead.
Just questioning how this is aligning with our, the VOTEC, because that was the big issue.
It is, it is close. VOTEC is waiting to see what the rest of the county is doing. A general feel today at our meeting was there is a lot of us that are proposing to start on Monday, the 26th, so we would then go back and talk to our Career Center. If they are really looking to maintain their start date on the Wednesday prior, that was their, their point. We have made the decision that we will do what we need to do to support our BCT students getting to school to get the transportation to the Career Center, so that we didn't, right, not changing it, but making sure that we are doing what we, yep, that we are providing ample opportunity for those kids to, to be able to access their program. Our feedback from, you know, Dr. Maori, who has, you know, been at the high school for a very long time, he has, and, and anyone sitting there, Mr. Sparks, you're, you're out in the audience, have shared that many of our BCTC students really, you know, work to, to do whatever they need to do to get, you know, to school. Those first few days are really important, because I know that there's a lot of classwork, you know, their, their normal testing for safety is taking place before they can get into their shop, so it, it's important and valuable time. So, we will work with Quigley Bus to make sure that we can kind of have like satellite spots to, to be able to pick up our students. But we were not proposing to start, you know, that early, because of the way that leap year, whatever is, you know, changing things, so. Mrs. Scott.
Do we have any snow days built into this, or couldn't, didn't that work out?
We, we did not put snow days in. We have 180 student days in here, because we have applied for the flexible instructional days, which is a three-year.
Okay.
Application. So, we know that we have five days automatically in there, and also, the, the latest change from the Department of Education is, you know, that we could have 180 student days or 990 school hours, instructional hours. So, there was a lot of conversation about, you know, if we have 180-day calendar and say we have seven snow events, and that, you know, exceeds our flexible instructional days, but we've still exceeded the 990 hours of instruction, you know, we're safe. So, we, we did not embed any additional days there. That way, we were optimizing our time.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Proffing.
You did get the BCIU? I sent you.
I did, yes.
Your schedule, so you know how, how that interacts with yours.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yep. Mrs. Dieroff?
Yeah, I saw it last year when we wanted to change it. We were told we follow the, the IU, the BCTC.
But I, you are right. I, I did share that we were following the, the Career Center, because we have an abundance of students who do attend the Career Center, and this year, I have gone back to the Career Center and said, "Look, we're moving our date to that Monday, and we would like for you to accommodate in some way, based upon what the rest of the county is doing." So, the conversation in their, their calendar is not set, so there is some discussion to continue to be had. Anything else, Mrs. Dieroff?
Regardless of what they do, we're going to do what we're doing.
Correct. We are.
Again, it's what we were told.
You, you are correct. I've, I've learned a little bit more in a years of work here.
I'm glad you're needing to plot back and forth with our answers. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. This will be on the agenda next week to be voted on, so if there is any input from anyone, you know, please, you know, let us know, and it'll be there at the end of the month. Thank you. Oh, I guess I'm up again. Mr. Stout, do you have the health and safety plan? So, every six months, we are supposed to review the health and safety plan, based upon receiving, you know, our S or ARP monies. The health and safety plan was reviewed about six months ago. In that health and safety plan, we have been really not doing anything different in operating school. We're not closing, we're not moving to virtual, we are, you know, not putting social distancing in place. So, the health and safety plan that we reviewed back in, I want to say, June of last year is, is the same. The, there's, you know, we're, we're doing all of the typical things that we should do, encouraging people to have good practice of hygiene, you know, staying home when you're, you're sick, not feeling well, and to always follow your. you're sick, not feeling well, and to always follow your, your physician's advice when and if you are sick. So at this time, the Health and Safety Plan that we have to go over this evening has no changes in it. So you can scroll through each page, Mr. Stout. We are, you know, again, presenting the same thing with no changes whatsoever to the plan. It is, you know, pretty much just about self-screening, practicing hand hygiene. When you scroll down to the part where it says universal and correct wearing a mask, those are optional, people can wear them if they want, we have no requirements, there's no current policies, protocols for social distancing. We'll continue to provide reminders regarding hand washing. There's, there are signs in some of our lavatories, certainly in our nurses' offices, cover your coughs, sneezes, just typical things. And, you know, same with our ventilation, we have been practicing, that we'll continue our ventilation practices in all classrooms and common areas, recommend air circulation patterns. We're committed to the best practices developed to keeping the workplace clean, so we're continuing to, you know, disinfect and save in, in areas, all areas, universal precautions. We continue to work with the Department of Health if we feel like there is any reportable disease that would follow policy 203. And when it comes to staff illnesses, they are required and recommended to follow their physician's office. If we scroll down to vaccinations to school communities, again, if there is information that people are seeking, we can provide it for them. And, you know, with respects to accommodations for students with disabilities, we continue to address individual education plans and 504 plans on a basis-by-basis situation. And then, again, as far as coordination with state and local health officials, we continue to maintain our existing partnerships with those local and state agencies. So there is really no changes. This may be the last time that we have to review. There might be one more time in July as S or ARP money, I believe, goes away. Is it September? Yeah. So that's the Health and Safety Plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, one question.
Okay.
Didn't we remove contact tracing a while back?
Yes. Do I have that on?
Yeah, you still have it on here.
Okay.
It's Section A, so we need to remove that.
Okay, yes. We'll make, take care of that. All right. Completes my reports. Thank you.
Mr. Brophy, BCIU?
BCIU completed my orientation last week, or, yeah, last week. First meeting is the 19th, 18th of this month.
Ms. Updegrove, BCTC?
We have a meeting, upcoming meeting on the 25th, we'll be present at, about the, all the new stuff. And I guess we're going to discuss the starting time, you know, that'll be brought up, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right. This time, we'll be announcing the committee chairs. Education Student Services Committee is Mrs. Wendy Kratz and Mr. Brad Updegrove. Facilities Committee will remain Mrs. Christine Nyman and Mr. Roger Updegrove. The Finance Committee will remain myself and Mr. Zawada. Policy Committee will be Mrs. Mary Ann Scott and Mr. Jeffrey Zawada. Student Board Representative, board support will be provided by Mrs. Kratz. At this time, we're looking for the approval for December 19th, 2023. Board of, uh, public comment, I'm sorry. Skipped right over it. And that's why yours are all here. Mrs. Terizzi?
Is it red? Is it on now?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Hello, everybody, and Happy New Year. My name is Alicia Terizzi. I'm a teacher at Middle School West and the head hockey coach at the high school. The last time I was here, speaking with you, we were getting ready for playoffs, and I'm pleased to announce, I'm sure you guys already know this, that the 2023 field hockey team at the high school made an appearance in the state field hockey tournament for the first time in over 20 years. So, and a lot of the girls are here tonight. I want to congratulate them, I'm sure you guys do too, on a great season. In August, I started to speak to you guys about what a major disadvantage Boyertown athletes were at with the lack of turf. Well, at, right now, that continues. I'm going to tell you what I'm doing in my life to get ready for next season. Right now, we're working to try and find turf. The turf that we have used the last two years at 422 Sports is great, and, you know, we also operate under, you know, the beggars can't be choosers mantra, but it is not full-size, and it certainly is not ideal. We have found a turf available for us to rent at the Far Post. The problem is, it's only available from 3:00 to 5:00 every day. It is already rented from 5:00 o'clock on for the next few years. That creates an issue with our poor parents getting kids over to Limerick by 3:00, 3:30, it's nearly impossible. That means we need to get a bus. You know that I got my CDL, I can drive the bus, I'm volunteering to do it and have Quigley not pay me. We're waiting to get a cost from Quigley to find out how much that actually costs, because, you know, there's maintenance and diesel fuel and all that jazz. But that also spikes up the cost. Far Post is charging us about 190 per hour. You know, that really adds up. I'm waiting for you guys to approve the calendar because that also affects when we can practice and what our preseason looks like. But, you know, these are costs that aren't going anywhere. We're, we're going to be spending between $10,000 and $20,000 a year on turf rentals, all of our games being away, our kids never getting to play here, having senior night away. It's a major disadvantage. We're making the most of it. We really hope that you guys, you know, realize how much money we're spending right now and that we can move forward with the turf.
Mr. Dolan?
Good evening. My name is Joe Dolan, and I live in Bartow, Montgomery County. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak here tonight. I wanted to speak to you tonight to continue to implore the board members to move forward with the installation of turf for the student athletes in our district. Athletics are an extension of the classroom, and just as resources are needed to be upgraded in the classrooms, like computers and technology, the same is true for our facilities and fields. I know it will not be an easy task fiscally to install turf, but sometimes the right thing is not always the easy thing. My kids have had an overall positive experience here in Boyertown with academics and athletics. Our daughter, our daughter was fortunate enough to be part of championship teams in field hockey and softball and accumulate many, a great deal of personal accolades along the way. Those memories will last a lifetime, but almost never happened. Before high school even started, an opportunity presented itself to go play at another school. We sat down as a family and weighed the pros and the cons. From an athletic standpoint, Boyertown's field hockey team had not had a winning season in over a decade. They played on grass, and playing in the postseason was not even a realistic expectation. Honestly, the easiest thing to do would have been to leave. However, the one thing we kept coming back to, the one thing that bothered me the most was, do we want to continue to be part of the problem, or do we want to be part of the solution? We knew it wouldn't be easy, but we challenged our daughter to try to help turn things around. I distinctly remember telling her, can you imagine how good it would feel to beat Springford, Upper Perk, Owen Jay? Can you actually imagine being able to play in a district playoff game someday? To help make that happen will be something you will never forget for the rest of your life. She chose the hard path and chose to be part of the solution. They not only eventually beat Springford, Upper Perk, Owen Jay, they beat everyone else too, on their fields. Then had a magical season that none of them will ever forget, and these girls continued that and went to the state playoffs this year. My question to you, the members of the board, is what choice are you going to make? The easy thing to do is to continue to kick the can down the road, like people have sat in your seats before have done. Easy thing to do is say, we don't have the money. We would love to, but we can't right now. Those are the easy things to do. Those are the choices the people who came before you made. Those are the choices that some of you sitting here may still be considering, but that's not acceptable. Boyertown once had facilities that were state-of-the-art and an envy of neighboring districts. I know, because I've played for one of those neighboring school districts. I remember playing baseball in a Ralph Langt tournament at Bear Stadium and being awestruck. The place was a cathedral. That was in, well, trust me, I was jealous. I was jealous of what the Boyertown kids had, everyone was. That was a long time ago, okay? That was 40 years ago, almost. Those days are over. Now neighboring kids not are, not only not jealous of Boyertown kids, they feel sympathy for us in the fact that we are the last school in the entire Pac-10 without turf. They feel sorry for our field hockey team, full of talented girls who sit right in front of you right now, who in order to compete have to play all their away games, play all their games away and miss out on the experience of defending their own turf. Someone should feel ashamed by this. Someone has been asleep at the wheel. Our commitment to our kids means we need to reinvest in our facilities. Our kids deserve better. As a board, choose to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Don't continue to be part of the problem. It won't be easy, we know that, but it needs to be done for our kids. Make the hard choice, make the right choice. Let's move forward with the turf project and put Boyertown back on top and the envy of neighboring districts once again. Thank you.
Now, we'll be looking for the approval of December 19th, 2023. Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes is presented. Roger, and I'll second.
Ms. Dieroff? Ms. Dieroff, we're looking for the approval of the minutes?
I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott? Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, under the superintendent's itemized agenda, this evening, we have overnight trip, and we're looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the overnight trip for our, sorry, overnight student trip. The, the purpose of this trip is for approximately seven BASH students and one chapron traveling to Northeast Middle School Bethlehem, PA on February 8th, 2024 to February 10th, 2024 for the PM, Pima District 10 Orchestra Festival. Ms. Dieroff? Ms. Dieroff, we're looking for a
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, the administration recommends the Board of School Directors approve the following personnel actions, including resignations, employment appointments, change of status, leave of absences, and supplemental contracts as per the attached. I do want to draw to attention that on this personnel agenda, we are recommending three administrative positions. We are looking to appoint Mr. Jared Sparks as, from assistant principal at the senior high school to principal. Mr. Eric Houck, who is a teacher on special assignment, to assistant principal who will be on an emergency cert, and we are looking to add Ryan Venner to join our team as an assistant principal. And then please just note all of the other changes. I also do want to acknowledge that we do have retirements for our teaching staff, our support staff, and I will try to bring some accolades towards those folks at our next voting meeting so that I can have them all accumulate it. So looking for a motion for the personnel agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Holt.
Uh, I think we're leaving another center. Are we, I had asked before, if we're looking into why all these people are leaving? And what are we doing up at her school now with, with, uh, uh, I guess, a, a disadvantage? I can't get anything on the, on the, on the, on the, um, what do we do to fill that vacancy temporarily? I mean, this is, this is just...
I'm sorry, Mrs. Dieroff, which, which school are you referencing and position?
Earl.
Earl, and, and with respects to uh, our custodian?
Yeah.
Okay.
And at least, that's what that, that, yes, what are we doing to fill that void?
Mr. Hahn, at this, at this time, she, the, the question by Mrs. Dieroff is, what are we doing to fill the opening being made by the custodian who is resigning at Earl Elementary School?
Sure, that position, that position is posted on Skyward. We've been accepting applications, and that position will close as soon as it is filled. I think one of the other questions was about the turnover and what we're doing in regards to exit interviews. The majority of the resignations that are on tonight's agenda are substitutes who left in '21, '22, or '23. Obviously, we weren't able to conduct exit interviews with those folks, individuals who do depart the district. We do conduct exit interviews to get some information about why they're leaving, where they're going, what were we not able to offer that a new position and a new employer can? And that information is, or will be, moving forward, provided to the superintendent on a quarterly basis. We will also be monthly, and we will start this in the month of February, conducting stay interviews randomly, 10 each month, just to talk to existing employees about why they stay here, what they like about their employment, and hopefully that data and information will help our retention rates in all aspects, whether it's support, professional, or administration.
Thank you.
I didn't know we just could do, but that's not being done. Because I, that's my next question, is how much do we spend, how much do we spend in overtime last year?
We would have to get that information for you. Your question is, how much have we spent in overtime for this past year, or the current school year that we're operating in?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I, I would have Ms. Danicola get that information and report back out to the, the full board with that answer.
Okay, you can go ahead with the vote.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dieroff?
No.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Roger Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our three administrators are here in the audience, you know, at this time. Did anyone have anything?
Actually, if you mind.
Absolutely, go ahead, Mr. Sparks.
Thank you.
Now it is on, all right, here we go. I should know, I've done how many programs of studies presentations. First off, I'd like to thank School Board and Central Administration for this opportunity. We are going to continue to work together to improve the educational program that we provide for our students. Students, I know you came here just to see the personnel agenda. This whole turf field was a decoy. Just kidding. I, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the other two administrators that are going to be joining our team at the high school. I have Mr. Houck, who is already at the high school, many of you know him already from your social studies classes and being throughout our building, as well as Mr. Ryan Venner, who is coming to us from the CCIU. We're really for, we're really looking forward to working collaboratively as a team to continue to improve everything that we're already doing at the, at the high school level. So thank you for this opportunity, we look forward to making the most of it.
Public comment period number two, Ms. Terizzi? Want to do it again?
I am really hopeful that you will, guys, will approve the building of the turf field so we can have access to equitable facilities here at Boyertown. You already know that Springford, Owen Jay, PV, Methacton, Upper Perk, Upper You already know that Springford, Owen Jay, PV, Methacton, Upper Perk, Upper Marion, Pottstown, Pottstown, all have at least one turf field, and to be honest, most of them have more than one. Pottstown is in the process of building a turf field also. If you want to look at, Berks County, Ole, Twin Valley, Redding, Wilson, Daniel Boone, Connor Weiser, Governor Mifflin, Schuylkill Valley, Exeter, all also have turf. I'm sure that I forgot some of the smaller schools there, because I'm not super familiar with the schools in Berks County. 20 years ago, turf was not common. Now it is. It is time for us to bring our facilities up to par with everyone else. Some people are acting like having a turf is like us asking you to build the Taj Mahal. We're just going for a base model here, okay? We really just want to be able to compete with all of the other districts in our league, in our county, and in our state. How much do we value our students? Well, I guess we'll see. I beg you to do the right thing and vote finally to approve a turf for Boyer Town. I do like that earlier this evening, I heard board members saying, we need to do what is best for our students. I really hope that you are serious about that and that you do the correct thing and level the playing field for us by providing facilities that are on par with other schools in our league, county, and state. I believe our kids are worth it. Do you?
Mrs. Terese, just, just for, because I checked into and have been in communication with Pottstown, they have not moved forward. So, I just wanted to provide accurate information, just so that we all do. I know that they planned on it and they were having discussions, but I believe at this time that they did not move forward, but I didn't want, I, I just wanted to put out the fact that, yeah, right. So, that was all.
Or comment? Mr. Updugrove.
Yes, I know turf field is a big subject, but you know, again, girls, students, it has to be a budgetary item. You just don't pull the money out of the air to put, spend $3.5 million. I agree, I watch these girls play on that field when I'm over there, and I agree, but it has to be something, when you're sitting in this seat and you're making decisions on your children's education and to be a good steward to the community, it's budgetary. You have to do the same thing at home when you're sitting at home doing your bills, the same thing we have to do here. We have to make sure we put it on and it has to be a budgetary item, which I am forward for. So, I just want to let you know, sometime you'll be sitting here, I'll be dead and buried, but you'll be sitting here and making the decision for your children. My children went here, so I know what it's all about, and I went here. My parents went here. So, I am definitely vented into what your future here is going to be.
Thank you.
I want to thank the ROTC for a very well-programmed tonight. That was very nice of them to come out and do that. Thank everybody for coming out tonight in this weather. I do appreciate you ladies, but as Mr. Updugrove said, we have all of our students here to think of. It's not just one, it's everybody. So, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying we have to find the money for it, but we have to find the money for all of the education. You heard about language being important. Everything's important, so we've got to be able to do everything for everybody. I'm here for everybody. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, turf is the hot item tonight. I'm not against the turf at all. I have to hear from parents, I have to hear from taxpayers, so get the word out. I need to hear from them to say, yeah, it's okay if you raise our taxes more than the 3% that we usually, and I don't know all the particulars of the budget, but for me, I want to do what's best for you guys, but I got to hear from mom and dad, because they're paying the bill, and I got to hear from the taxpayers, are you okay? Because we're going to have to raise taxes. I don't have a problem doing it, because I love field hockey. My daughter played, I love field hockey, so I, I want to see you guys have the best too. The other thing I wanted to highlight here too, for the parents, on Wednesday, January 24th at 7:00 PM, there is going to be a virtual, which I'm so happy to see this. I know that we discussed this back in October, to, to give the parents some help when it comes to social media and the internet and what the kids helps on, you know, helping your student, your child navigate social media today, because there are a lot of negative things that you see. And the big thing now is the AI. You don't even know if you're talking to a real person, if you're looking at a real person on there. So, they're having, the school has been really good at putting ideas and thoughts and things that parents can do for their, their kids, their students, to watch the play on social media, to do some blocking of sites that you shouldn't get to and things like that. But, on Wednes, I'm going to try to be, tune into this. The, I don't know who's behind this, Mrs. Torsha, I know that you and Mrs. Moore, but I don't know the players that are going to be running this virtual edition, but it's good, because social media is harmful to our kids. It causes anxiety. It really does cause more of a lack of socialization, because you're socializing to whoever online. It causes an addiction. It can play with your head if you get on there with the wrong people. It can lead you down a rough road. There are dangers there with social media, and you guys need to be alerted to it too. So, hopefully, we continue with this. I think this is a good thing for the school, for the parents, for the community, to make this available to us, and I hope more will come out. And I hope you schedule it again, because you know how one date sometimes is not enough, so I hope we also schedule this again. That's it.
It's called Inspiring Digital Responsibility, and it is going to be a Zoom event on Wednesday, January 24th at 7:00 PM. It's in today's Let's Talk Tuesday for anyone that is looking for the link.
I just want to thank the field hockey girls for coming and congratulations on your success, and I will do everything in my power to help you get your field, but like Mrs. Scott said, it'll be very helpful to encourage your friends and your parents to keep emailing the board and keep the pressure on so that no one forgets. And, yeah, I support anything that gets our kids off of screens, and sports is, yes, a good way, a healthy way to spend your time. And while we're at it, we could also talk about middle school cross-country, because same thing, we're like the only district that doesn't have it. But, thanks again.
Mrs. Dioroff.
Yes. Last Thursday, great experience. I received an invitation to see the judicial, our two judges come and play. Same, I was so proud and excited, because one of our own enamored into the graduate from Boyer Town. I think we had from Boyer Town, I'm not sure, I didn't know. So far, I couldn't, it was awesome to sit there and see part of our own people in a position. His whole family is visiting to Boyer Town, his brother graduated, but it was, it was really, really a very exciting experience. And I've been to other ones, but this one was, was very, very precious. Okay, also, I'd like to know what leadership is doing, some leadership or administration or whoever, such information about the new Senate Bill 843. I like to get these things ahead, and I know it's not going to go into effect till '26, '27, but we have to educate our teachers, we have to do all that, believe it or not. Last time I said that other board members want to laugh when I come up with something and when I was talking about cursing and then you say pass the law, that was, that was really a feather in my hat. And I was talking about a class in called Life, well, this isn't exactly the same, but it's different, because now we're going to have to have a course in... It'll cover things like budgeting, saving, credit management, investing, understanding loans, interest rates, etc.
Mrs. Dioroff, unfortunately, you're fading in and out.
Okay, so you want me to stop?
No, I'm just saying that unfortunately, you're, you're breaking up a little bit and it may be due to, you know, the weather, I'm not sure, but I would say that if there's anything that you want the administration to have a response to, if you can just send it to us in an email, we'll be happy to address your question.
Well, no, I was waiting to find out when administration's going to tell us about it. Okay, thank you. I asked about AI a couple of months ago too, and still never got an answer on that, so thank you.
Yes, I'd like to echo Mrs. Dioroff's sentiments about Coach Hilligus. He played an important part in my life as well, and Boyer Town was lucky to have him. And then, just one more thing about the turf fields, you know, I definitely think we are well overdue to get turf fields, and I hear a lot of, you know, reasons why we can't, but I'd like to focus on how can we? I think that might be a better approach, and I'm a little naive to the processes, I don't know what comes next, but I think we should attack this and try to be positive about it.
Okay, first, I'm going to congratulate our new administrators at the high school. I'm going to put a wedge in the door now, so there's no more revolving. Best of luck, and if you need anything, please let us know. I also want to introduce Officer Bone for everybody that doesn't know him. He's one of our new officers, so treat him with all the respect that you treated our fellow officers that were here before with Officer French, Officer Perez, police girls, and guys. It's very important. Turf field, yes. People that have talked to me know that I'm pushing it. I heard some parents talking. You're 100% right, it's not just you girls, it's football, it's band, it's, so what I'm asking is possibly the coaches and the directors, get together. We got to fundraise on this. We do not have $5 million sitting in our back pocket. Now, we're going to try to do everything we can to get it, but we're going to need the public, and I know there were some emails sent to me, and I know there's a lot of giving people in this town, a lot of businesses that were, you know, in this town. For those that don't know it, Boyer Town Stadium was built 100% with donated dollars. I remember, I wrote a check, but, and we've turned out, we saw how that turned out. So, no, I'm proud of Boyer Town. I agree 100%, we should be in front, not in back. And, everybody, I hope your canoes don't leak tonight, but thank you for all the import, import. We know it's important, I'm glad you ladies came out. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to thank the girls and all the parents for coming out. Obviously, in this weather, with most of our neighborhoods flooding, and you still felt the importance to get out here and speak, I think it speaks volumes for the cause. I'm an advocate for the turf fields as well. There is no, Jeff wasn't lying, there's no magic wand, we're not pulling, I think it's six and a half for two fields, three and a half for the one. Now, I know that there's things that can be done, like ester funds and possibly selling Pine Forge grants that Jeff's working on behind the scenes, but the rest is going to have to probably come from the community, so start digging in your pockets, all right?
All right, next upcoming meetings, we will be here in the Ed Center on January 23rd at 7:00 for our Board of School Directors' voting meeting, and then February 13th will be the next committee, the whole meeting, again here at 7:00 PM at the Boyer Town Ed Center.
Motion to adjourn? There you go. Meeting adjourned.